I want to introduce Katie Snyder. She's the Director of the New Leaf Society and also she's the Chairperson of our Arboretum Advisory Board. And next to her is Matt Roberts. Matt is a landscape architect, done a heck of a lot of work in the arboretum for us and we very much appreciate that. Just an expert in everything, landscaping wise and landscape wise and done a great job on this program that planned he's going to show you. But Matt also serves on our advisory Arboretum Board and also is a member of the New Leaf Society Board. So Matt's been working on this master plan for about a year now. We had a committee made up of city staff and New Leaf people primarily that worked with Matt on this plan and we think he's come up with a really great plan for this. This is phase two of the arboretum. It's not a complete change upper, it's just many more additions and things we're going to be doing in the arboretum to make it even better than it is now. And it's a wonderful facility, very, very well used, people in it all the time and their dogs. So anyway, we also have any questions needed. Jason Barnhill, who is our Horticulturist and Director of the Arboretum, so he was a big part of this plan too. So he's here, he'd get any questions or anything after. So I'm going to turn it over to Katie and Matt and let them tell you what's going on. All right, welcome.
Thank you, thanks for having us. So we wanted to just show you the plan. I'm going to give a little introduction and then Matt will actually walk you through the five areas of the arboretum. So this process just came out of some discussions we were having with the Arboretum Advisory Board. So we know that, you know, a lot of this is a popular site, we get a lot of visitors and there's more opportunities to do something new with the open spaces. There's still donor enthusiasm. And we got to a point where we had completed the first master plan almost entirely. And so when people would come to us and say we want to sponsor a project, we would just, we've come up with something good, but I think it was Fred Davis who said, "We really just need to have a plan. It needs to be thematic and intentional and something that will keep us going for a long time." So that was the idea behind that. And as Tony said, this board, it's a volunteer board and they worked really hard on this plan. They recommended to the New Leaf Board that we do this. So New Leaf did sponsor this plan and we will be reimbursing it in full amount of $28,000. So once we knew that was what we wanted to do, and I'll also emphasize that we will continue to drive the fundraising for this. We are not asking for public funds. We will be driving this through private donations and grants and nothing will get built until it's funded. So this is just kind of as we go. Sorry, this mouse is not my usual mouse. So from the Arboretum Advisory Board, we formed this subcommittee that Tony referenced and we had all three of the city staff members participated from the larger board. We had three people from New Leaf Society, including myself. And then Matt is our landscape architect and he was the natural choice because he's been with the project for a while and he's done really good work for us there. So the smaller group started working on a wish list and we worked also with the larger group to just identify some areas that we thought we could improve. And so we wanted to add new features, so that would be things like arbors and pergolas, bench swings, you know, that's the more artistic elements. New gardens, we want to expand the play spaces. We want to support programming by having more gathering spaces and more educational opportunities. We want to look at comfort items like shade and seating and we wanted to expand the walkways. So once those initial conversations started, we decided to seek community input and we did that a couple of different ways. We did do a public input survey for support from the City of Burlington that was conducted in the spring. We collected almost 300 responses, which we're told was pretty good. And most of those folks reported that they were frequent visitors. So we feel like it was a pretty good, you know, sample of folks who kind of know what's up at the arboretum. And we also took the plan, once we kind of got it on paper, we took the draft plans to two public events. We took it to the Parks in Progress event over at the Parisian House on September 8th and we had members over there showing that plan, talking to the public about it. And then we did the same thing on Arboretum Day, which was recently on November 8th. And what we found from these conversations was that we're pretty much in line. What the public wanted and what we had dreamed up were pretty similar. So the things that we heard most were new gardens, that was the number one request. More shade, seating, extended walkways, making the play spaces better, especially for older kids as they start to age out into the current playground, there's not as much for them to do. And then better parking, lighting for when it starts to get dark. And there was a lot of requests for public parks, so a lot of opportunities there. During the process, which as Tony said, it took about a year, Matt did consult with the city staff on a lot of different issues. So I just want to point out that we did our homework. We talked about site maintenance extensively with Jason Barnhill and Amy Barber and the Screwing Health as well, which is Amy's department. We consulted on public safety, ADA compliance, and then we looked at utilities locations and mapping. So that we make sure all these plans are feasible. And to summarize, so this was our process. We began in October informally and then we brought it to this group at some point and started the official contract. I think that was in February. We did the public input in spring and concluded the work in August. And that was around the time that Matt had finished that draft plan, took it to the open house. And then last week, the NLS Board reviewed and approved the plan and so did the Arboretum Advisory Board. So those stakeholder groups have taken it back to them to wrap up the process and they have approved and are recommending it to you all. And what this plan is going to provide, it will be a blueprint for the next 10 years. We hope to review it in five to see where we are. And it will give us a clear framework with target enhancements so that when those opportunities come up, we have, you know, we know how much money we have, here's a project that matches and we have a really good idea of what we need to target and go in there and put in. So that's important. And then it's also maintenance based, so it's very much been designed to support the staff to make their lives easier, their jobs easier, filling in spaces sometimes that are hard to mow or maintain, to put plants there instead, just looking at it really through that lens to try to help them as well. And then this is the plan itself, this is just the summary page, so I'm going to speak through that because I pretty much just did all that. And I'm going to turn it over to Matt to walk you through the five areas. We'll start at Church Street and we kind of worked backwards to Front Street. So we're going to start at the main area and this is, here's the parking lot and this is the building there.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for having us. As Katie mentioned, the arboretum is divided up into basically five different pieces throughout the whole entire 17 acres. The first one is probably the one that has the biggest projects. And I'm just going to go through the highlighted projects for each individual area. In this area around the Commons Garden, we're going to have a huge perennial expansion. And we'll have a whole divot perennials around the building itself right there. In the playground that's existing now, we're going to include a new climbing feature, which will be pretty substantial. We'll also have some shade covers over some of the potter pieces of equipment. And I think you might be familiar with the guitar sculpture that's getting created right now. Over near the great lawn, we're going to propose a large pergola that will kind of be like a gateway into the great lawn area. It'll be a large, almost like a room for your entry. Within the great lawn itself, we're going to have another perennial extension that will kind of make it more like a secluded room. It will be full of different plants of interest for at least three seasons out of the year. The other thing we're going to do is we're going to enhance the landscaping and night lighting around the entrance sign over by Church Street and also try to promote some new lighting within the parking lot itself. The next area, which is just below the Commons Building, we're going to introduce a large new woody ornamental collection of plants along with understory trees. We're going to also create a new small amphitheater that's the size for about 15 to 25 people. We're going to have a shade structure that's like a leaf-based theme that will be created out of metal to provide shade over the amphitheater itself. Throughout the entire bank, we're going to create a rock garden that will include a lot of different ornamental grasses, of course, rocks, and some really interesting plants. Along with that, there'll be places for public park and several patios with small enough to have like a cafe table and so forth. And there'll also be some bench swings. The other really interesting thing is the wetland enhancement area. We're going to propose an engraved boardwalk that curves right through and allows people to be immersed into the wetland area. All of this will be able to be viewed from the road, the Commons Building and of course you'll be able to interact when you're in each individual space. The third area, which is, also has quite a few large projects, includes a rain garden, an extension of the woody ornamental collection. But this one will focus on three large families, the Viburnums, Birrias, and Wajilias. The other thing of interest there is we propose what we call a pocket house, which is a place for the people that work in the arboretum to store their tools. It'll be accessible by like a golf cart side, not trucks, but like golf carts and so forth. But the interesting thing is they'll have a roof garden that you can actually walk on and look out over. Those of you that are familiar with the arboretum intimately, to the right of that, there's the sledding hill. So we preserve that, it'll be quite another thing going winter, I guess. There's another collection near number four, which is another woody ornamental collection. That will be basically an extension of the others and will also propose some night lighting enhancements around the existing gazebo. The biggest project in area three is on the north side of the drawing, which is a large sidewalk that will have new noble-sized trees, but we didn't put them on the plan because there's existing trees and some of them are kind of on the other side of the bell curve and we didn't want to speculate exactly where the trees are going to go, but there is plants for that. That sidewalk will be hopefully a way for us to educate the public on stormwater control devices and it will help, basically we'll be able to come up with creative ways to handle the stormwater, to avoid erosion and so forth. As we move further down into the arboretum, the project development is a little less, partially because a lot of it's been developed and doesn't need all that many enhancements. But this particular one, we're going to, there's off-street parking that is kind of just pull over where you want right now. We really want to develop delineated parking using cobbles and the areas that we're not allowing parking, enhance the grass so that we don't have rust and so forth like we have now. So there's several areas here and they're actually speckled throughout the entire 17 acres. The other thing that Matt mentioned, it's in the first drawing, but here I can do it. There's some bench ornamental horticultural themed bench swings that we're going to have. For instance, there's the oak swing, the magnolia swing, the dogwood swing. And then we hired a metallurgist in town that's very artistic and we've drawn up these benches that has more name that applies to each thing. The rose garden, there's just going to, for reference, a few enhancements. We're going to have stepping stones in the turf as the approach and a new rose arbor behind the existing seat wall. And then of course you can see where we're going to develop more plantings. Some of them are rather unique because there's some huge oak trees and there's some special shade, shade tolerant and air tolerant plants that don't need that much water that are going to develop in those areas. Lastly is the fifth section. Here, it's more of a focus of, there's some invasive species approaching in our chameleon hydrangea collection as well as there's some existing persimmon trees that tend to drop their fruit and taint the sidewalk and becomes rather messy. So we've created a persimmon arbor that you can actually walk through, but it'll avoid, it'll collect the fruit before it gets to sidewalk. I think that those kind of highly, the significant projects that we've developed in the past year. I did want to say that I had an excellent experience working with the City of Burlington Engineering Department. They provided us with Ryan E. Swift helping with the base maps using this Near map program. These drawings are, you know, 15 layers thick, but if you hit one layer, you can see all the existing infrastructure, sewer lines, water lines, gas lines and that type of thing. So we can avoid a lot of issues upfront by knowing where all those things are. So it's been a fun project and a great group.
Any questions from council on this item? We're ready to get started, just got to get some money.
Absolutely.
What were you attempting to raise?
We don't have an dollar figure, but New Leaf is investigating a capital campaign to launch next year and this will be one of the projects that we'll be targeting.
Great. Good, nice. Thank you for sticking with this project and having the vision and woodshed all down the way.
It's a pleasure.
It's really you, it's fun to watch. Thank you guys for being here, I appreciate it.
The council is a meaningful ask, but that would be on the agenda tomorrow.
Okay. Is that good, everybody? Good, all good? Thanks.
Thank you.
Our next item this evening, item B, is capital improvement projects update. At this time, we'll recognize Assistant City Manager Rachel Gill.
Anyway, thank you. I will in turn recognize Fred Patrick, our Capital Project Manager, and Morgan Lassiter. We're going to give a brief overview of all three capital projects in the Recreation Month General Obligation Block, starting with a brief construction update from Paramount and then we'll move on to just the MAC and Western Sports Complex.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So we're coming for you tonight to just give you a brief update on the Paramount Construction Project, kind of as we're talking about capital projects in general. So I know Fred may be a little more well-versed in construction than me, so I'm going to let him talk a little bit about where we are to date on the project.
Okay, so we've had fun digging in the dirt on this project. It was, we found quite a few things to put the foundations in, but we ran into basements, sub-basements, pile of brick, all different kinds of things that we didn't, had no idea that they were there. But we managed to wade ourselves through all of that. We're about out of the dirt phase, which is always the phase that you're worried about things. And so we've got the chalk drawings ready for the steel. It's being fabricated right now and it will be delivered late December, something like that. And so you won't see a tremendous amount of activity until that time and then you'll see the steel will up really quick and it'll be, then they'll really be working after that. We've got a big sign that's going to be on Front Street that's going to inform people that Paramount Theater is still there and it's expanding. And I think, I think that's about the end of construction.
Yeah, like Fred said, we'll see that steel start to go up. So right now folks can't see a lot of what's going on because the fencing's up. And so that'll happen in December. And we've been talking with Chrisman, the construction company, about some opportunities to engage the public when we do that again. So we're coming up with some ideas of maybe having a piece of steel available for the public to sign that would then be the first piece placed and stuff like that. So we'll come back out into the community and tell folks when it's time to do some fun stuff like that, so.
Well, it's good to know we've got a patient that we're building out.
It's been an adventure. 1927 building and you start opening anything up and it is a spinning adventure.
The State Drive area back behind the depot was a lot of surprises. Any questions on here now?
We'll move forward with the mayor of the office center. This one might involve a little more detail. I do want to mention we've got tonight with Scott Casper. He's an architect with Michael Graves, the architectural consultant, doing this project for us. And so he'll be available for the questions that council has about designer bidding tonight.
Yeah, you go ahead, you answer if you're good.
Okay. We got it, you drop it. So just as a reminder, this project was first bid back in March as a permanent masonry facility. With the deductive alternate, so kind of baseline for that project, the low bid was at 8.8 million, which meant the full construction project was at 10.4 million. So council directed staff to work with Michael Graves to redesign to try to hit that $6 million project budget. And we did that work over the summer and into the fall. And Michael Graves suggested attention membrane structure, which the city had been planning to sole source through government contract to save the contractor markup. And that price was about 1.7 million for the structure. We've got a mock-up for you here of what that is going to look like. The paint colors on the building are to be determined, but something that plays nicely with the membrane structure. It's a different view, different here. And then that's the view of the inside of that structure. Scott can obviously answer any detailed questions you've got about that. But we did open the bids last Thursday afternoon and we received three bids, which is great because we could open them. And the low bidder was Hamlet Associates, they're in Mount Henry. The base bid was $5,664,057. And when you add the structure that we had planned to sole source and overprovide, that puts that and the equipment and the construction contingency, puts our full project budget at 8.6 million with that low bid. And that is $2.6 million over our target $6 million budget for this project. We've discussed with Fred and Scott and his team about the ability to negotiate something a little better. We've got about 10% capability for that. So even if we did move forward with that negotiation with the low bidder, we'd still be about $2 million over project budget, maybe a little bit more. These bids are valid for 60 days and we open them November 13th. So we've got the better part of two months before we need to formally accept or reject those bids. So at this point, I mean, we get to the part where we need some direction from council, that we need more staff to move forward with this. I think just to start the conversation, we put forward three options with the consideration of moving forward with the bid and borrowing, if you will, the $3 million that are going to be sold on December 2nd for Western Sports Complex. Moving a piece of that over to finish this, that allows the project to move forward as currently designed. We could step back, again redesign and perhaps come up with a semi-conditioned or convertible structure, 10 to 15-year lifespan, very similar to what we removed from the last time around. Or you could consider leaving it as an outdoor facility. Maybe that $6 million rolls into the Western Sports Complex, a different project. There may be plenty of derivations of other options, but to start out, those are sort of three places that we've considered moving forward. For you guys that have left something out or you've got context to add.
I think the design we presented and what you have there, the structure itself is a aluminum frame structure. It is a 50-year warranty on that structure. And the membrane structure is fully insulated from the top to the bottom and that has a 20-year warranty on it. So the design intent was always to do a 20-year plus building for this. And I think the other goal the city had was the mechanical systems and the air quality within it for the users. So we were going with the pool pack evac systems, a little bit higher grade mechanical system. And that was where the big, you know, differentiating between what we were expecting to see and what we saw on the price was namely that mechanical system. We're still kind of digging in and talking to the Hamlet and trying to figure out where those differences were.
So we are sourcing the membrane and that is how much?
A little over 1.7.
So that's 1.7. And the bid itself, which was 5.7, is everything else, including the labor to handle the membrane? Would the difference be the contingency or what's the...?
Between the estimate and what we found in a phone call we had Friday with Hamlet, was the biggest item we had was the difference in the mechanical system of what we were expecting to spend and what it came out to be. We worked with, you know, Brady, the preferred vendor that, you know, we were asked to. They do this regularly. They made suggestions which our engineers, you know, to lower the prices and get the prices down. And from that, you know, the engineer's doing a similar project and the prices weren't as high. So we're still trying to figure out where that price difference is, but it's namely the mechanical pool evac system, which pulls that chlorine smell out of the pool and makes it a more inviting environment for the users.
So if you're 5.7 on the facility and 1.7 for the covering there, that's, that puts us at 7.4 million?
Yeah, so construction contingency on providing equipment.
Okay, I'm trying to figure out how it got to the total. So we're thinking that we might be able to engineer some of that to save a little money.
A couple of opportunities.
Yeah, so the bonds that, I mean, we're, obviously we've wrestled with this one. I think we've learned that the pool business is tough.
Absolutely.
So we have sole bonds for the beginning phase of the sportsplex and the $6 million for this. for this. So walk me through, so as we're going through this construction project, let's just say that we're good with the total price and it's time to move on. Obviously, we've got six million sitting there for that. How does that money pay out over what period of time before we're going to need to go into above the six million that we've set aside?
That's a good question. I can start by speaking from the folks that we would source the membrane structure from. We would go ahead and give, cut them a BO the day we sold the bonds on the second to get us in line, because it's a several-month process for them to construct that. So they kind of got us on the waiting list already. We told them go, and we cut them a check on the 31st of December. The rest of it would...
Would go forward.
Yeah, we'd go forward as the construction company has this.
Seventy-five percent. I mean, it's a bail curve that you pay operating construction, so.
Over a bigger, probably less.
Yeah, we think it's going to be a maximum a year, year project. So by the time we get to where we're operating in our money, or we've got to find some additional money, will we be far enough along with the Sportsplex to know what we're going to do with that? Will we get far enough for the design phase? Because then we're going to need to go back to the bond market. So ideally, in a perfect world, we pull a little money from the Sportsplex, combine the total project to get this one done. But we keep both projects moving forward so that we can hit the timelines.
Yes.
That's the way I would look at it.
And as we've been, we've got Nick Woodruff here with us to talk about the proposal for the first phase of pre-construction services for the Design Builder for Western Sportsplex, which is prepared for consideration.
Because we've tried to spin this thing multiple ways, and we're coming up needing a little extra every way we look at it. So there's a point in time you just got to accept reality, in my opinion, and say that's kind of where we're at. Let's go ahead and move forward with it. How does everybody feel about that?
I think, I think we take a little money, you know, take a three million of that and go into that design. We know we want that. We want to get it rolling.
Got to get it.
And so, and then, you know, we know that's going to be available. We take that money, we get this contract underway, you know, continue with Sportsplex, you know, we got time to work on that.
We got time to work on it. I didn't want to hold them, I didn't want to hold you guys up now, we got...
No, but as we discuss the pre-construction phase, it seems as if we could do both with this next tranche of bond bonds.
After that three million, you'd be, you'd hit ground running, right?
On both projects.
Okay, well, that's, that's where I think that's what we did.
You don't think there's going to be a shortfall on something?
Well, so it may very well be, but I, my thinking is that we just do what we can at this point with the best information we have. So the shortfall could potentially be in construction costs in Sportsplex, but that, we now know that that budget's going to be a little bit tighter, so that just goes into the design methodology of that. And we still have the alternative of working with the YMCA and combining. They're still very much engaged in that conversation, so as long as we can move forward with the design piece and looking how much real estate we're going to need and those sorts of things, I think in the scheme of things, we're going to make it work in the end, and I don't, I don't think this puts too much of a burden on that. As Sportsplex, public buildings are one of the options, but acquisition of property is going to be another, another issue itself. Question is, not only acquisition of property, is it parking also a significant situation? You know, there was this discussion about partnering with other group, YMCA, one of these discussions come through. I'm not sure whether it stands at man, but, you know, I thought about this a long time. In many ways, that might be a way we need to consider doing this. Why not be partnering with someone? We're not here trying to outdo anybody or maintain the uncertain things on a certain side and save money. You know, the infrastructure that goes around the buildings, whether it's a wide unit and so forth and so forth. Another thing that we really have to talk about, there's land acquisitions. And that's another, that's another game there, trying to determine what side would be needed to provide the space and access to make both of these things work in one place. Again, that's another subject to discuss. So we're potentially going to have to sort, but somewhere between two million to nine million dollars, depending on what sort of savings we can find. As we start working on the design of the Sportsplex, I do believe that we're partnering with somebody like the YMCA. They need to be part of that concept so we can even see if it's feasible. Because nobody knows how to do that. We just know it would be a pretty good idea if we could pull resources. So, but regardless, as we start designing that, we know our budget's going to be, what do we set aside for that?
Thirty.
Thirty million, so, all right, so we start working on twenty-eight million. We've got enough time, there's enough ways to figure it out. I just think we need to pull the trigger on that and move forward. That's what I mean.
How much time do we have on the bond money? Seven, six, seven years?
So. Inflation's only going to take it up, which is quite a long way. So, you know, leave it with it. I'm still waiting for the plane to get you. But truth of the matter is, is that it's creation. I will tell you this, the standard, you stand up like five or six years to a long period of time. Is this a lot of work, five or six years? Paramount, like, why am I sure when to do? When is the due date for that thing to be really ready to go? Do you mind that? When it's going to be finished? Yeah. I think it's really going to be September of this, of this year. Yeah, so we're good there. Yeah, okay. So if no one was here, I'd say April. Right. He would appreciate that. But point of it is, on these other, these two facilities here is, you know, I think you have to take a look at it, actually, from a financial side, but also just what services it provides going forward for people in this community. I've heard some concerns already, they're saying, well, why are you building a recreation center since you already got to here in Hammond? I'll say something straight right now. Nineteen seventy-seven, seventy-eight, we got money, a film fund to build Wolf Park and Fair Shopping District. Those are the last two recreation centers built in the city. Go back and look at the timeline, that's about, oh, forty-two to forty-three years. So, you know, I, I hear that rhetoric out there, and that's, that's not really fair for people, but as the town has grown, unfortunately, fortunately, unfortunately, we're going to grow to the west and to the south, because we're blocking everywhere else. That's going to go straight up, which may be an option. We're going to do something to. So the reality of it is, is that you're trying to provide facilities for people who's going to live throughout the community yourself, as, you know, they get to utilize. And I had a question the other day, but how about people who don't have transportation? We have lean transit. Lean transit can be utilized because of that nature. So to me, the route we started on is the one we probably should stay on going forward, what's better for the community. It could be some pickups and disadvantages, but truly going forward, five, six, seven, eight years out, I think it does some meaningful things. So we could lock the Mact down at roughly eight and a half million dollars plus, whatever savings we can get, move forward, and still stay on the timeline with getting the design services agreement moving with Sportsplex.
Yes, so if we get that direction tonight, we can present a council item review as tomorrow to have us move forward with contracting with that low bidder, awarding the bid to Hamlet. We can get moving with the purchase order for the sprung structure, which is the branding of that membrane structure, as soon as we sell the bonds. So that night, we'll probably have a bunch of room to allocate those funds, and we can move forward to order that, so, yep.
Now, does Hamlet have some actual experience in this, like, for...
The, the, the contracting work, yes. The sprung structure themselves, they are working with a director that sprung has, you know, suggested to them, made available to them, and sprung also provides a technical expert on site during the construction of the structure itself.
Or duration.
They also have experience working over existing pools, which is another big item.
If asked in terms of the structure itself, what's involved in the structure, what's the difference between what we're considering now and what was done in past?
So, from the structure you had previously, this structure is, the frame is all aluminum, it's all aluminum coated, some DuPont chemical resistance surface. The membrane itself, I was leery about the membrane until they told me that they actually use this for Rikers Island as holding facilities. And I opened up my pocket, or my letter opener, and put it through it, and it was really hard. So it's a durable membrane, but that membrane also has an R30 insulation from the very top of, top of the building all the way down. So this is a fully insulated building, and it's, compared to the previous one, it's made for this chemical environment of the chloramides that off gas from the pool. And they have numerous, numerous pools that have been around for 20-plus years now, all over the world.
We've spoken with some of those pool operators, they seem really happy with their products, so that felt good to me as we exploring this option.
Now, where are you around when you talk to them?
I believe that, when I spoke to him recently in Utah.
Utah, I, I know, it was another one.
I do believe in the earlier facility we had, taking it down, putting it back up, created an awful lot of problems to that structure. That's what I think a lot easier than said, you know. So, that's why I said a question. Oh.
It does include a roll of access doors so we can get equipment in in the future if you have to change electric chargers or work with mechanical systems.
And Harold, this sprung company's been in business since nineteen eighties, so it's about a new builder, new technology, this has been around a long time.
Yeah, it's all aluminum versus the last one we did had stainless steel, and that has the corrosion issue with that formula, so this is all aluminum, so.
And the evaporator system pulls that chlorine out so it won't be collecting on the metalwork and causing corrosion.
Sounds like we'll prepare a geniative rate consideration tomorrow night to go ahead and work a little better the contract with this.
And I've worked with Hamlet for over thirty years. They're really good, good company, good people.
Thank you. And for our final item on the capital pressures update, we've got Nick Woodruff, he's with the company group, our Contracting Project Management Company for the Western Sportsplex. He's been handling the qualifications-based selection process for a Design Builder for the Western Sportsplex. So I'll toss it to Nick to let you know where we are and what our recommendations are going forward.
Good afternoon, everyone, and thank you for the opportunity to speak to you today. In early October, we advertised an RFQ for Design Build Services. From that RFQ, we received 14 qualified submissions. We interviewed three of the qualified submissions and selected Babbitt as the recommendation for the Design Build Team. Their team consists of mostly architects, who would be the engineer of record, Kimberly Horn, who's the civil and landscape design firm, and Brown Rule, who will be providing athletic and recreational facility support. We have Chad Daniel-Forth here with us, who is the VP of Triad Division, and Dave Wetzel, who is the pre-construction executive. Babbitt has provided a scope of services and a price for pre-construction services for $278,000, which covers the first phase of the pre-construction service. This includes program, the building programming, site selection, schematic line planning, and economic impact analysis. Pre-construction services for the remainder of the design service, including schematic design, sign development, construction documents, and permitting, will be handled through a separate amendment. A proposed American Institute of Architects AIA contract is currently in development and embedded by the city's legal and finance departments before execution.
So as you mentioned about partnerships and trying to find the right fit of that building, that is built into the contract. Pre-construction services that Babbitt will be offering, community input meetings, visioning, working with stakeholders to kind of determine what's in that building, therefore what footprint we need, and then moving forward to figure out which sites are available that will fit those footprints. So that first phase is really focused on right size. What are we building? What's it going to include? How will it serve the community where best will it fit, available properly?
It's great to have you here, or come as Nick mentioned. So, and somebody we've got experience with.
Our most recent Design Build project was completed by Babbitt and the entertainment company.
Absolutely. Good people work with us.
Okay, so that contract would be...
If Council's able, we can have that prepared for consideration tomorrow night. The authorization of the city manager to execute the contract. The contract is still being worked through with both legal departments. It's got a little bit to go, but we have the scope of services and costs not to exceed our one that we can put before Council.
All right.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Any other questions?
Good there.
All right, our next item, item C, is animal services update. Just to have a little bit of that, our Animal Services Director, Jessica Arias.
Good evening, Senator. I did not prepare a nice slide show for it, so no dog in that picture tonight. But I did want to just provide a very brief update. We've been working on our animal services operations agreement with all of our municipal partners throughout the county this year. And in June, we were able to do an extension because the lease that we're, who've been currently working expired this summer. And so you guys approved us to do an extension, and we've been working with the town managers to come up with an amended agreement. And so we have something that's kind of ready to go, that we want to bring before you tomorrow night, to authorize our city manager to execute that with our partners. Essentially, the only changes we made, nothing to the funding structure, but we agreed on not having a termination date, but agreed on having all the managers come back annually to do a review and overview, and at any point we need to amend it, we can come back then. In that way, it kind of sets us forth for the future with minimal erosion. Hopefully, it's been working well for the past five years. So that's item one I have for tomorrow. The next item I'm really excited about, we're looking to scale our state owner services for public. Talk about things being more expensive than ever and not affordable. That's been the case with veterinary services for the past several years. We've seen an increase in the number of large dogs coming in at the Animal Services Center, and over 90% of those dogs are not sterilized. So we see dogs that are not sterilized more likely to be roaming, causing public nuisances, creating public safety issues in our communities. So we've really been working with the state owner clinic to address state owner, more affordable options for our community members to get their pets sterilized. Unfortunately, they're kind of at capacity. They're exceeding their appointment bookings, so they can only do so much. Thankfully, we've had some regulatory changes in the state in the past couple of years where state law now allows governments and other non-medinary entities to maintain a veterinary clinic license. So we've had our clinic license done this year, and we've been able to help... So we've had our clinic license done this year, and we've been able to help support some of the low-cost VAS fixed program clients through that, and that's been successful. So now we've got that operation in place. And we're looking to scale up those services to provide more support to community members for their large dogs, particularly since that's the pets we see most coming in that need sheltering services. We've got some funding support through private donations to help us scale this up. And tomorrow, what we'd like to do is request a budget amendment that would be revenue neutral, so we would essentially match the fees the spay neuter clinic offers to the community, which is either a half or a third of the cost of private providers to make it more accessible, but also to not get into a situation where we're competitive in any way, but to provide more supplement to scale up the number of pet spay neuters that we can provide for our community. So that's what we're looking at tomorrow. And I'm not sure if I've missed anything or left anything out there.
Just the new positions, the budget amendment.
Yes, so part of the new budget amendment that's revenue neutral will include three new positions, as well as funding to support our veterinary service hours and supplies and things like that that we need to scale up. We've got some donor funding coming in to help us with some additional equipment that we'll need to outfit. The second surgery suite, which we have plenty of room for in our new animal services center. And we're really excited about this opportunity to more fully utilize that center in ways that help the community.
Quick question, if it pays for itself, essentially?
Yes, that's what we're looking at, revenue neutral. We're looking for it to bring enough revenue in to pay for itself and cover the costs of that.
That's a real good program.
Yeah, and it's very much needed. It's really hard for folks to get, especially big dogs, spay neuter.
It certainly makes sense to me.
And it certainly worked, you know, having the cat program in here, we don't see as many nuisance issues with cats. We have a lot of cats getting sterilized, not as many health issues with cats in the community. And, you know, certainly we're not over capacity with cats, because we've got a wonderful program, getting them through, getting them sterilized, that they're not producing the worry, creating public nuisances. Can't exactly do the exact same program with dogs, but next to that, I think this is what a direction we can pan in to, to help folks get more of those big dogs fixed.
Sure looks like it was that.
Thank you so much.
Don't do no funky accounting, man.
Thank you, I'll pick me a screen for you later.
Okay, our next item, item D, is minimum housing process update. This time we'll recognize project manager.
Great, thank you. Thank you, your banker, Mary. This is my favorite title now. But thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. Lots of discussions been had by council about where we're at, what we expect for our minimum housing. And in your agenda packet is a flow chart of what we do as far as from point A to point Z. And if you can see how complicated this flow chart is, and all the steps that we have to go through. So, in working with our staff, and I do want to thank our planning staff, Lee Sylvester, Jamie, and Chris Marlin, we've kind of met together to say, what is a simple way to kind of see what next steps are, and what their dates and times are due. So also in your agenda packet is a checklist of where the process should go, with dates beside it. So that way, if there is a certain question about a certain property, we can tell you exactly is it step seven, or what date it has been done, or if there is any holdup in the process, or if it is in the process of, you know, an extension for permits. So we were trying to really just make it simplified, and really something we can share with you and the public as well when questions are asked, where are we at on such a house, instead of having to go back through. And we can do this for each project that we are working on.
If the public could go online and check that.
Yes, sir.
It's a comprehensive list, too.
We started off with the flow chart, and it was as confusing to me to begin with, but staff fully understands it. But they really did a good job of really trying to break it out and saying which step is which, and what the process is. Because there is lots of steps where you can say, well, we're going back to do re-inspection, or we're giving additional time for somebody to do the repairs necessary.
You can comment to folks from there.
I certainly appreciate your work on this, honey, because you know, this is, you know, the end of the vine, you see that, you know, we, you know, gets unrolling on. Looks like maybe we've been in together.
Yes, sir.
That was good, thank you.
And just to give you a quick update, and staff has really been working hard. We have had four public hearings or four public meetings with houses. On the October 15th, there was a hearing for 445 Avon Avenue. That was given a 90-day extension for fix and repair. Then we also, on the same day, 4A South of Ireland, there's been an order given for a 30-day demolition. So you may be seeing a budget amendment coming back to you for demolition and coming up very soon. Then also on October 22nd, there was a hearing for 121 Jefferson Street, and that has been a 90-day order to demolish. And then on the 29th of October, at 1115 Shaw Street, that has been given also a 30-day order to demolish.
Right. What a funny.
That will have to come back to city council. We do not have anything in the budget at this point, so that would have to be a budget amendment for any demolition.
Get beat. I say get beat, yeah.
Bring it back.
Yes, sir. Any other questions or comments? Thanks, Craig, for all the work on there. That sounds great to me. We've had a lot of discussion on this in the last three, four months, and compared to, we've had three right before improving those areas. I think that's, that's a jungle that. But they're always doing, yeah, they're really good. Checks our lives. Okay. Thank you. Our next item, item D, is voluntary contiguous annexation requests. We have 1201 and 1211 NC Highway 61 South, parcel ID 13470 and 106250. And we have 997 North, NC Highway 87, parcel ID 117373. This time we'll recognize our executive director, planning and zoning services, Jamie Lawson.
Good evening, Mayor, and council members. So the first one I'll discuss is the, the property that is south of NC Highway 61. These are two properties that are highlighted in teal. In total, it's about just under 14 acres. These properties are contiguous to the existing city limits by right of being adjacent to the highway and the other side of the interstate. We also have had other properties in this area recently annexed and rezoned and are moving forward for construction. So the request for, from the applicant for these properties, they're currently within Guilford County and have Guilford County zoning. Ultimately, you'll hear next that these properties were in front of the Planning and Zoning Commission for rezoning request. They want to come into city limits, and by, by that process, we would have to assign a zoning designation. So I'll be talking about that when we talk about the Planning and Zoning Commission report. But first, just an overview, these properties would have to be annexed in order to provide facility services. We do not have any kind of proposal in terms of the development for these properties. The only thing that we know is that they're interested in coming in under the general business zoning district, which is comparable to what their existing zoning is now in Guilford County as being highway business. Ultimately, this would require a public hearing, as well as the rezoning request. So as, as I normally do, inform you during the work session of this request, and then we will ultimately, should it be forward, advertise for public hearing, as well as for the rezoning. Okay, any questions on this one? Okay, the second utility request is for a commercial property, a commercial use that is on NC Highway 87 North. It's 997 address. It is located at the intersection of NC Highway and Shawford, Shawford Road, Circle K is, I believe, not far from here. This is an existing, used hilltop, way glue, and it's on the east side of that southeastern intersection. This is not contiguous to the existing city limits. This map shows our ETJ in this beige color, and then you see Elon in, the Elon's corporate limits in this bluish color, and ETJ in the lighter grayish color, I guess. These are satellites within Elon, these that are circling around here. So Elon's corporate limits are closer than our city's corporate limits. So even if the city didn't want to annex the properties, we technically would not be able to at this time. So the applicant has applied for a utility connection to hook up to water to serve the existing use, and staff has recommended the utility request and has tied that into the annexation agreement that you normally see. We have a language that would tie to the existing use and the existing proper owner. So if any of those things change, the, the new owner or the new user or both would have to come back and request a new utility agreement and go through this process again. We don't have zoning control here because it is located outside of our ETJ. So the annexation agreement is really the mechanism that we're keeping the controls, if you will.
Mr. Mayor, you recall that when this came up the first time, I think we were on the verge of turning it down and ask if there was any way we could do this. Actually, we had tried to tie up in paragraph six of the annexation agreement. You don't look at that closely, but we have tried to make it so that it's obviously all a disaster potentially if you have utilities outside of the jurisdiction zone, including the ETJ. So this is one of those potentials. That's why we're trying to tie it down, sort of tied here with paragraph number six, so that you can provide them with the border that they indicate they need at this time, but also assure you have some, some opportunity that it's not going to change. And all of a sudden, find some high-density use and incubator of properties out in that area in the future.
This is water, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Which makes it a little easier. So is this something for, for, like, instead of data public hearing, or?
No, we would not instead of data public hearing, we would request by resolution that it would be put on the consent agenda for tomorrow night.
Plus, there's no annexation.
There's no annexation.
Okay, everybody go with that.
Okay, thank you so much.
Yep, it's just those two?
Yes, sir.
Next item, item F, is boards and commissions report, specifically planning and zoning commission, there are two items. So we'll hear from Jim on P and Z.
Okay, the, the first item, pretty much discussed previously, this is the rezoning request tied to the annexation request that I just mentioned. So this just summarizes what I summarized before, really that the properties are currently located in highway business, Guilford County zoning district, and that they are seeking to come into the city, where we would then recommend assigning the general business zoning district to those properties. Planning and zoning commission did recommend this rezoning request at their October 27th meeting unanimously, and it is consistent with the Guilford County Economic Development Plan and the city's land use designations. This area is an economic development growth area, and providing the services and then having the, the properties developed in the city will continue to serve as a catalyst for this area.
So this is trade general business, limited use?
Correct.
So that's important, then. Because obviously, they're looking for a tenant for the property. They're trying to get as favorable as they can.
And I, you know, I think it's, it is appropriately zoned in terms of business, business zoning, but since there will be utilities, they're going to want to connect, and by default, through that connection, they do need to annex. So they're, I think they're teeing themselves up, since we don't have any kind of knowledge of, of any kind of site plan or any kind of proposal that we tie to the rezoning request. So this will be properly advertised, as well as the annexation. And they ideally run similar to what you've done before, on the same night where you have considered the rezoning request first, and then the annexation after that. Okay, any other?
Any other questions on that?
Okay, and then the second item that the planning and zoning commission heard in October was another general rezoning, and it's for this 1.5 acre parcel on the south side of Church Street. It is currently zoned medium-density residential, and Mr. Parker, property owner, is interested in amending that and seeking high-density residential for the property. Staff finds that this is also consistent with the land use designation and provides greater opportunity for infill development at higher density where the utilities already exist. We do not, again, we do not have any proposal for development here, but increasing the density from medium-density residential to high-density residential gives them that opportunity to get additional units to help support future development.
Where is it located? You said south, south Church Street?
It's on the south side of South Church Street.
It's, it's near it.
Uh, let me see if I have. It's, it's, as you're heading, as you're heading west towards the pro, towards city limits.
So it's, it's out toward, out to?
This is, there's an existing little home park here, on, adjacent to it, and then, I forget the name of the residential development that's here. University Drive is, oops, sorry.
It's, it's probably?
Backside Water? It's the backside of Waterford, yeah.
Yeah, and, and right there.
University Drive right here.
It's kind of a listed development, yeah.
There is, I think, two homes currently on these properties here. There's no, there's no connection headed towards university through, through, this is our whole foods, yes?
Four.
Hello Foods, yeah. I'm sorry, we have Hello Foods. Your whole foods.
It'll be nice.
Any questions on this one?
I'll fix that.
I have a question. So it's one-point-five in size, and they want to move it to high-density, correct? So let's say they did apartments, how many would they be able to get on there?
So the current zoning would allow for just under five units per acre, so about seven or eight units, let's say, seven units with roads and infrastructure. When you change the zoning to high-density residential, it goes up to thirty units per acre. You know, the lot size isn't going to yield all that much, but it does allow for different setbacks and different heights depending upon what you want to do. This is just a comparison of the current MDR and HDR with respect to single-family homes. But I think, like I said, we don't have any proposal, but I think the intent is to go for multifamily.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep. Our next item this evening is IAG. The September second, twenty-twenty-five City Council Meeting. The town will recognize City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. As you all are aware by general statutes, the usual times for the City Council Organizational Meeting, following an election, is the first meeting held in December, which currently is scheduled for December 2nd. In the City Council Chamber, per the current meeting schedule, which was adopted in December of 2024. Historically, this meeting's been held in the council chambers. However, in 2021 and 2023, we held the meeting at the Paramount Theater. Paramount is under construction, so it's not available. As a reminder, the structure of the meeting typically is the outgoing council and mayor completes any old business, then a recognition of the members that are leaving their seat for their public service, and then the election results are announced, and the newly elected members are then sworn in. And then, under the direction of the incoming mayor, a new council commences whatever business they have to that. So in preparation for this meeting, staff has compiled information on the locations that have been suggested by current incoming council members for discussion if council so chooses this evening, in recognition that there potentially could be a larger crowd that may not fit in the council chamber. So the information that we've compiled is at your seat there. Staff, quite a bit of time to compile that information. It includes information on seating capacities of various locations, department capacity, public servant access, audiovisual plans, and these including live streaming, recording, and in-room sound setup that we would need, also the security needs for the spaces, and other pertinent details. Locations that were evaluated include, you know, the current city hall chambers, Cummings High School Auditorium, Connoisseur Senior Center, Mako Bigelow Center, and the Fair Shop Community Center. Staff also require not impact Alamanis and Williams High School Auditorium, either one of those options are available.
Well, I think impact Alamanis is termed as that. Is that correct, Mr. Mayor? Yes.
And so any changes to the meeting location would require public notice, and so we would, staff would like to do so as soon as possible. That's the change of venue that's decided upon, and we have doubts here that compile that information.
So we're basically looking at three additional. The Cummings High Schools would cost $2,000, and I immediately saw that. Any others for you? What does it have a cost associated with?
So the costs, as much as are based on what it would take to set up the audiovisual, the live streaming, sound system, and such.
Who is charging that $2,000? The city or Cummings?
No, Cummings would not be charging. That is the cost that we would pay a vendor, a third party, so that we can broadcast and have adequate sound systems in the facility.
And the friend is back in 2021 is how can we have an organizational meeting where more people could attend, but it's still being maintained the integrity of city business, which is city-centered. And that's why the Paramount, being a city-owned facility, already having a PA system and IT being extremely familiar with who we're going to be interacting with, was the perfect solution. And due to the construction piece, we said, all right, still maintaining the concept that we want our city business to be conducted in the downtown area. Impact Alamanis was pursued for the same purpose, since they're close. There would have been a cost, I believe there would probably have been a cost associated with that, although we have used their sound system, I think, for events. So, you know, that's the, that's the concept behind it not being at City Hall like it was forever until 2021. Only the two organizational meetings not at City Hall, it was 21 and 23, and they were dented. So I do believe that geography is an important piece, an important piece to city government. So certainly, I am an advocate of a larger meeting space. I'm fully in advocate of that. It is, there's multiple reasons for a robust attendance anyway. If you've got incoming elected individuals, they're going to have a lot of support and a lot of excitement and anticipation. And likewise, I'm believing after eighteen years, I've got over a hundred people to welcome, RSPD. So I've chose to have a personal venue. So I get all that, but it appears to me that if we're trying to maintain geography as our friend, would Connoisseur Senior Center not be the best logical solution?
So there are two or three other events scheduled to be moved. So parking becomes an issue. We managed overflow parking at the Aquatic Center.
On the same night, you're saying?
Yes.
Well, to announce that's a city-owned facility, I guess we could, but not cancel it.
Yeah.
Also with the Senior Center, it'll be a kind of a ground-up build on the AV within that space too. So I put in there some of the spaces I don't have cost for on the AV yet because we're still trying to find a company who'll take the job. Because it's a little bit, there's some failure points in setting up something from the ground up, but I think I've got one out of Greensboro that may take the fail on helping us with that.
We have had meetings here before. We had a joint City Council meeting.
We did, and we had work sessions there during COVID.
That's right.
And so we had a vendor who helped us with that, who's been longer around. And honestly, that work product was probably not the best work product we had put out. So I'd like to find somebody else who can help us.
What is the possibility, and I'm in agreement too, that we need a larger space? What would be the possibility of the first part of the second meeting being held in the chambers? Then we recess, and then the rest, the staff, go to another venue, whether it be a venue that we want to share? Is that a possibility? Somebody again, remember that. The first part of the meeting, which is basically the people in this room, that we have a meeting there in the chambers, recess, twenty minutes, fifteen minutes, whatever, to allow you guys to get to the next venue, have the venue set up, and then everybody can celebrate, and it takes care of both parties?
Well, the dilemma of, the dilemma of AV materials and things like this, totally something we've got to deal with.
So if we want to livestream whatever, it is going to take AV infrastructure to create the livestream off-site. It's really where it gets tricky when we bring folks in to help us do that. We just don't have the infrastructure or equipment to do it, so we, you know, we hire it out, so.
So that would affect the first part of the meeting. You're going to have to pay the second part anyway for livestreaming, right?
If you did it separately, yeah. All the infrastructure's in this building to do the product.
Right.
I was, you did price out the second, using some of the cameras here to go to Cummings.
Oh, to, yeah, sometimes we take the cameras down and use them other places, yeah.
That's part of the price for the $2,000.
That's the reduction with using those cameras, they brought it down to $2,000.
It's just part of it, yeah. I mean, there's, there's another, we can do another option, you figure it out right now. That $2,000 includes using some of these cameras, I don't know if that's application.
Because Cummings is charging zero, this is.
And the AV person has to be at either location, and we're looking at all three. So you have to have this AV person regardless, well, not at City Hall, right? We have our own here.
That's right.
But the other two locations or three, then you would have to have an AV person hiring and ready to go to either one. So location really isn't the problem, it's just being able to find the person that's able to do it.
Yes, ma'am, yeah. At Cummings, we do have a company, Connetec, who, there's so much infrastructure already built in at Cummings that they said they felt comfortable handling that job for us. I've got to go to a production company, like the company that we use for Carousel Festival out of Greensboro that's just got more equipment, more skill, more staff, that could put in something that is more of a ground-up build. The livestreaming portion of it is difficult to get the in-room audio done well. If that is important for folks. Like Mayor Butler was talking about in the Senior Center when we did it before, sometimes the audio was hard to capture, if anybody remembers. We also had a mask, so it made it extra challenging, but it's just the way the room is built, and the gymnasiums are going to be, there's going to be a lot of echoing and a lot of challenges in a space like that without hiring the right company, you know, which we're still looking for.
Connetec did not want to go to gyms. They did not feel like that they wanted to take on that job because it was too complicated for them.
Yeah, we've had that in our heads for, we couldn't find anybody to do it. It's just the size and the way it's built.
Yeah, and selling microphones is a tough deal in any capacity.
Yeah, brick walls, Connetec.
But Kerry Sound out of Greensboro might, you know, might give us a reasonable price. I don't have a price yet, and they're still checking the date, so I talked to them this afternoon.
So if you're getting an outside group to take care of it at Cummings, I still go back to what I said earlier about doing the first part of the meeting.
Well, to that point, I feel obligated to maintain council meetings in the city and downtown. That's what we've always done. We've had community events. To me, it needs to be Paramount, Impact Alamanis, Connoisseur here, keep it in the center of the city. If we're going to start the meeting here, when I'm done, I don't care what anybody does. That's up to the council.
I don't want to move, if we're here in the meeting, I want to stay here in the meeting. First time to, go ahead and...
But I was just trying to look after the other group. I say if they want to do it and make a larger venue, I'm fine with that. I have no problems with that.
At least we're having the conversation. I feel more positive that we're even discussing it, and so I'm trying to remain fair and open. That is an option, but you do want to have quality. Because, you know, just like the debate at Williams High School, if any of you guys watched it, the audio was, I mean, but they didn't have a production company, great, but the audio, I think, you know, it was just a lot. So I understand from that aspect, and you do want to have clear, we're able to see it correctly, so.
Yeah, I think the community deserves a clear audio feed and we'll get live streaming. I think with this space, sorry, I put a case. With this space, and I don't know if we've ever really talked through, like in 2018, and we did the updates in this building, like it will require moving people through the building, but we designed it in a way that there's a direct live feed to this room and a direct live feed to our manager's conference room. And so as we were just talking through with staff, I think we're prepared to execute wherever we need to execute. But in this building, our thought was, you know, you can see that we've got the capacity numbers here, the chamber sixty-four, the conference room down here that we're in is fifty. The lobby has an audio feed as well, and we can put chairs out there.
There's a video feed too.
That sounds like it has the audio and video.
And so that's twenty. And then we would require staff and department heads to go into the municipal conference room because we're staff. And so we end up with about a hundred and fifty-four total kind of in this building. And then we talked through, you know, how do we reserve seats in the chamber for those that are going through their recognition period, and then cycle in those folks in and out of the chamber? And then, you know, we have Jen Shod who does all of our special events photography for us, who's done some really great stuff for the city, is coming that night. And then, you know, using her to do some special photographs with the city steel or whatever folks want to do.
With families as well.
With families through, in that evening. So I think that, like, with this facility, there will be challenges of not everybody being in the same room at the same time. But I think we will be able to create a memorable event that we can get folks in and out of rooms.
Having it here, is that what you're saying?
I mean, that would be our goal. I think I definitely understand that folks want people in the same rooms too. So, you know, that's why we're prepared to do whatever we need to do to make it the best it can be for everybody.
It's tough. It's a tough, you know, with the Paramount, you know, having that opportunity. Like, you guys know, when I came in, that historical moment of being the first black woman elected to council, you seen, I mean, my side, I maybe had a little bit, but by myself, you know, three people coming, three different families, and it was just myself, the mayor, did you and I? Yeah, it was you and I for that, came in, Kathy, what do you call? Oh, wait, Bob, sorry, Bob. Sorry, Bob.
I knew you were special.
I'd elected Trump, huh?
But, you know, so I definitely understand. I know for a fact it's going to be a large crowd. It does. She, what do you think about the logistics and having this large crowd here?
This apartment's ready to serve it anyway. If it's here or somewhere else, we'll have the folks ready, no problem. I think that the most important components are what we already talked about, about the audio, the ability to do that, and then her, folks that do the event planning and I move people around, will just help facilitate, no problem.
Well, I mean, it is tough, but I know, kind of getting back to the same place, I think Beverly found herself, she was trying to put all this together anyway, and Impact Alamanis said, well, they changed their mind or whatever, that was the logical solution until they said no.
And I was fine with them, either one of them, as mentioned above, because they all make sense.
Yeah, when Paramount was out and Impact Alamanis said they're out, that really puts us back to here. And it is not ideal, and it's not perfect, but there's a lot of options.
So look at the three that we have, Cummings, let's take the gymnasiums out. So that takes out Cummings with Fairchild and Williams. So that only leaves us the Connoisseur.
Correct.
And that's the one that has.
Couple of events.
Couple of events and audio issues, yeah.
At Cummings, are we talking about the Jews? I just don't have the.
I'll get it.
Auditorium, yeah, that's right, okay, so we have.
Yeah, I, I just, yeah, we can get that, we can get that at the city center, I am opposed to, I'll be honest about that. I am opposed to that.
What do you think, Bob?
I mean, what, would, would Impact Element reconsider?
They had a review team that, um, to my understanding, reviewed the request and came back and, um, just denied use of the facility for public meetings.
Well, I think if maybe to ask, if, go back to them and express, explain to them the dilemma that we have and ask that they would reconsider, because, you know, the numbers, you know, really would be there. It would be downtown, and then the facility would accommodate. Uh, we obviously need to, you know, come to some solutions that, pretty soon. I'd be inclined to go back and ask them again, because that seems, it seemed like really a pretty good place to have it. And I, I don't know, what do you think? It wouldn't, it wouldn't hurt anything to go back and, I agree.
Yep.
Well, you were there for the, uh, for the announcement of the, well, sufficient reservation.
All over the place, yeah.
Yeah, and that's a nice facility.
Yeah, it is.
And it's, you got plenty of partners close by. Um, I'm just a little surprised that, uh, there wasn't additional conversation that, uh, that came from that. And what was the reasons, is it something that, that they're concerned about, or, I'm, I'm somewhat surprised to that.
Do you have any more information as to why they declined us for Impact Element?
No, it was just the request. Um, they did ask what was on the agenda, and it's hard to say what's on the agenda at this time. Other than that, it's, you know, we do know that it bears, um, an outgoing incoming, you know, boards. It was no, you know, elaborate reasons that they had reviewed. And, um, the decision was that they couldn't allow us to support public meetings.
I'm happy to remember, I'm happy to remember, like, having open public meeting there, like, where they don't have a guest list, you know what I'm saying? Like, I can register, and it may be, yeah, determine, I could not give them a firm, you know, attendance number 'cause I don't know how to gauge that in any area really, but I wouldn't know that actually non-firm could give them.
Right.
Uh, but we would just have, there's a seating capacity, I would suppose.
What is the capacity there? Do you know the capacity, the one twenty-four?
Something like that, one twenty-five.
I don't think that's gonna be more than that.
I mean, you're talking about one fifty-four here.
Yeah.
Without tables.
Yeah, without tables.
Yeah, with tables and tables, whatever, yeah, with little tables, yeah.
So I stand with Cummings High School and Impact Elements. I mean, I'm, I'm okay, that's a compromise, if they're willing, you know, you can go back. That's, Mayor would give the downtown, but if not, then my option would be with Cummings.
I do not like that idea. Well, if we approach Impact Elements, um, the number of people would be based on what they're allowing now. So it's not, you know, if it's at capacity, it's at capacity, we've gotta be respectful of that. And I think if they are concerned about what's on the agenda, we could certainly try to lengthen the agenda and allow them to review it.
Yeah, I, that could be handled.
That could be handled pretty easy.
Yeah.
That's the same number, because that's one fifty-four, and here was how many?
One fifty-four.
One fifty-four here, one twenty-five, that's not, we couldn't chairs and tables, we'll have to come up with some number to set up or the council members to have their seats, and, um, staff concerns seating.
Staff could do what?
Staff could be in the audience and not part of the seating arrangement, we have to have some tables, some seats.
Yeah. Well, you could have it, you could, if you have it here, you could have the staging area. A staging area would be the people that are a part of the second room, could be staged here or somewhere else. And then the first part would be the people, the hundred that Mayor Butler has, I have zero. For me, so, I'm like, it's happy.
Something about people you probably knows, and I didn't know that.
I appreciate that. Ronnie could do it like that.
I, I know how you feel, when I was mayor, and I had my wife and two people working on the campaign, so three seats is all we needed.
Yeah.
That was good.
Yeah. Well, I mean, I was, I'm glad you answered the question, 'cause I could never remember in all the years I was here, fourteen, I've only been to the paramount ones that I could remember.
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one, that was it?
And twenty-three.
I was like, was it there with me, but I can't get it? Oh, that's wrong. I'm sorry, yeah, but all before that.
Yeah, I was thinking about the same thing, right, in fact, seventeen, nineteen, fifteen. Yeah, it's always been, it's always been here. And I don't recall anything wrong, everything changed, I'm not so sure this is a, uh, in those days, it was family hang, but it wasn't a, full of people, uh, back in those days, well, you guys, we actually have that on hallway upstairs, you know, when it says.
So is that even a consideration? I mean, I get the first female mayor, I get it, you know, 'cause it is a good deal, and I'm fine with that. But I, I'm not a mayor, I'd like to keep it, I'd look really like to keep it here, but I'm reluctant.
And it doesn't sound like as much of a change to go to Impact Elements. You're saying one twenty-five here, you know, we gotta go back and beg them again to get twenty-five more people, and that's if there's no danger. I mean, I don't really see that to be much of a benefit.
Agreed.
So we're just stuck on, I know the mayor doesn't want Cummings, that's mine, so I guess we can just decide tonight, you know, if we're.
I'd be glad to get Cummings, Cummings was downtown. I just think it needs to be downtown. How about the fire station, God, where you can fit your own trucks, you know, just clear it all out, move in there and.
I'm a Cummings alumni, so I'm happy to go back. Well, you too.
Having, having in the area. The what?
Someone suggested that online. Having it outdoors, it'd be terrible.
It was, uh.
We had the drum play there last week, new weekend, yeah.
Is there anything, any other facility we haven't talked about? Sometimes you get used to the ones you know about, maybe there's one you don't know.
I don't know, I don't think the armor, I'm not for all occasions, it's downtown.
I thought about it, but it's not a city-owned facility either, but, you know, but Impact Elements isn't either, and the schools aren't a choice.
What, what about that, that, that's bigger, that would accommodate.
Yeah, they, they have bigger, yeah.
They have the big breakfast there each year.
Yeah, they do, yes, yeah.
I'm in favor of checking on occasions.
Does anybody have to impress anyone?
I know it's more than a hundred and fifty, but I'll look at the tables when it goes.
I don't look at the setup as far as the cameras and all that either.
It would be equivalent to being a gym.
Sorry.
It would be, it would be equivalent to being a gym, so we'd have to, production company coming into that facility as well.
Well, let's just go back to being here in two phases.
Is it Conover where?
It, one, you know, back on, the Fairchild, is that a, we just, the AV stuff is a problem, right?
It is, and then Jim, I mean, it's not impossible, I just, um, I spoke with the production company today, and they haven't confirmed that the date is available for them, and then they have to give you a price. Um, and so I don't feel like it's gonna be cheap.
Well, if you can do, if you're gonna do that, you might need to explore why. Cause why? Why, be kind of the same setup. Well, another thing, even there, is why is if, you know, which floors? You have, at, at our community center, tile floors and concrete walls, block walls, so the pussy's not good.
But the auditoriums are better than gyms, it's quite.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Now, maybe just check the occasions at three fifty.
Three fifty, right?
Yeah, occasions.
Is that capacity or that's?
That's capacity, it's three fifty, the occasions.
Well, while we've been here there last year, that, that, that was, uh, those were tables, and that's, there were probably a couple of unpeople there.
Yeah.
I think definitely, I'd, I'm going to, to, to occasions, but then you have the audio problem with that.
I mean, it sounds to me like we look into occasions, we can pull it off, we'll try to do that, and if not, we're gonna be back here.
Yeah. And I still like the two phases.
Yeah, I agree with that.
I think that'll be the only way.
Yeah, but anybody should get their time, it's both sides.
When you say phases, Ronnie, what do you?
I'm saying that the first group would have priority upstairs, and the second group, the incoming group, would be here. And then when the first part's over, everybody gets a seat, and everybody gets their recognition, and it's a win-win.
And you square each person in individually.
I'm sorry.
You're not gonna square all three new folks in at the same time. You would, when you talk about phase, you're talking about, and you could bring your group up and utilize the facility, and then go out when the next person comes in.
Well, you could do it either way, that would sort of be up to them, I think.
Yeah.
I mean, that's not our call, I don't think.
'Cause the, all the new is together anyway, right? It's just the old, I think Miss Kathy left first.
She left. Who was watching?
Who did you watch?
Judge Lee Brown is coming for, um, Jeffrey Smythe and possibly Altutus. And then, um, I believe Ms. Kennett has, um, requested a judge as well.
For two judges?
Two, yeah.
Okay. I like that, Larry. Now, we don't have to control it.
And we say it, we can, we can, we can talk about.
Now, we're talking about it, we're talking, yeah, upstairs.
They're not on a time constraint, so you've got time to maneuver everyone, right?
Share.
You're not on a time.
With the three, uh, incoming candidates, they've got time to share the information with their group. You agree?
So we look into occasions, still, I'm still in agreement with that as our other option. I think that's fair enough.
Yeah.
Yeah, if, if we can pull that off, if not, we.
But we gotta make sure that sound is good, because this is important. It would be actually bad as much for.
I was still ready, I was still ready, because if you can't do that occasion, like, if you guys outbook me and decide to stay here, that's fine with me.
I feel like we can make occasions work, as long as they're available, we'll, I'll call her tomorrow and see if she's got that time open and, uh, what it would cost us to reserve it and all that good stuff.
And we're still down now?
It'd probably take a little bit better sound system now, 'cause you remember, that's gonna be, that's expensive. That's gonna be kind of there, because if you remember, if you've been to the breakfast, if it's, you've got a lot of people backed into a room. So if you can, you know, make sure the sound system. It's in there, especially there's that. But in that, you know, it's interesting more than one, maybe, is that times I've been there, there's always been tables.
Take those tables out now, there's gonna be a lot of people.
Chair, you probably want chairs and tables.
They have those big round tables, so that's probably at three fifty, you know, that capacity, and they have the over, the other, I'm saying over.
Yeah, plus paper.
That's wrong.
To the white table, yeah, basically that idea, yeah, yeah.
We can do that.
Check on that.
Yeah.
So we'll check on that and hopefully get that information tomorrow and bring that back to the council meeting tomorrow.
Is there a specific time on what the public has to know? I heard you mentioned notification, is there like a timeframe on that, they have, no idea?
We just need a post-notice of that meeting change of location, you know, once we push out the agenda and the materials, we'd like to put something out, um, at the location as well as on our website on our website too. So in advance, this is all the guests.
Keep in mind, it is a regular meeting, too.
Yeah.
And you think, well, all right, there's not gonna be a lot on the agenda, we had one at Paramount. And during public comments, people came up and spoke about nuclear weapons.
Yeah.
Doing it for a night, so.
Cause we still have to have a public, yeah, yes.
That is one regular meeting, and we think that's what we do have to have.
Yeah. You don't have to do those meetings in a month or two.
One, one final comment could, you know, if, if, wherever, wherever we wind up, I would like to have sort of a minimal agenda for, because, you know, it's, there's gonna be a whole lot of activity there, and I, if we can. What about the public hearing, Danny, what, he had his own into.
No, I, I held off on, um, suggesting a date until.
Thank you.
Historically, that's been a light making any of them.
Yeah.
Uh, we will have, uh, updated fee schedule to be adopted, um, so that fees can be affected, any changes can be affected again right away. That's, that's one item.
The bond.
The what?
The bond.
Uh, the budget amendment for the, for the bond allocation.
Okay, good job.
Uh, other than the fee schedule, what we have, bond?
Just a budget amendment.
Yeah, probably like a budget amendment, once you sell the bonds on the second, to allocate them as, we party directed.
So both of those would probably more likely be on the same.
Exactly.
So.
Cause they'll have a work session.
Yeah, so there wouldn't be a lot of presentation, there wouldn't be a presentation right there.
Not with those two.
And they'll adopt those, right, you have to schedule for next year's meetings to adopt as well.
Yeah.
Work session, yes, please.
All concerned, yeah, that makes it easy.
So you got three things, right? Bond, fee schedule, and adopt of, of the immediate schedule for next year.
Public comment period.
Public comment, yeah.
The next item I'd make is city manager's report. Um, the other thing I have would be an update on the car rental section. Um, the sewer, sanitary sewer replacement was completed, the lining of the road right has been completed, um, last Friday. And the contractor that will be working on repairing the sinkhole is gonna localize, um, sometimes we expect to begin work towards two.
Good. I did go back to see what I think about that.
I've got one item, is that all you had?
Yes.
I've got one item that just was brought back to my attention today, and just being here tonight, um, certainly address it. We had a homeowner residential address on Met Street that was performing a car repair facility out there at the house. Y'all remember that? So if you remember, you know that you had a little bit of them.
They did, yeah.
Um, and I know we addressed it, I think, David, I think you had a good call a little bit.
Okay.
Um, and it kinda went away, but I was calling David, so they're down in the bodywork. I went by there, number fourteen vehicles, of which five or six did not have tags. Running a business, they're working on cars right there on Met Street out of the house, out of their garage.
Didn't want to pay themselves.
No, it's so near, uh, Ramada.
Working.
Yeah. This, this happened before, we had a big issue with this at that same place before, we had to send out code enforcement.
Yeah.
Um, so, I think, I'm, I'm going from memory a little bit, but we were basically, the guy basically said, no, these are my vehicles. And we got over barrel a little bit, and I'm not so sure he did send a letter to you. Um, but I got a phone call this morning that it's happening here, and I rode by there, and I was shocked. I thought it was an Amazon truck there getting work done.
I don't see anything wrong with that.
Maybe you could live beside him, Mike.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, it is, um, it is sort of between, um, it's between Smith School and the Ramada property. Uh, if you're going towards downtown, it's on the road, can't miss it.
Okay.
Um, it's the one with fifteen vehicles. Can we get somebody on that with?
Yes.
Can we get somebody on that with a little teeth?
We will look into that tomorrow.
Love pickup, Amazon truck.
Mines are being. Anybody got anything else?
Get away from us.
If not, we will stand in the yard, thank you.
Good job. Come here, you see here.